Unmute. Start video. Ah! Oh, oh, boy.
Abby? I am. I'm wondering, do you have the thing that I'm supposed to read about they're supposed to start within six months? And if the appeal to the you gonna read that this time?
Yeah, so yeah, so what I was thinking is if you do, I can do either both the the read in for public hearings that we sent you and this. Or if you want me to, if you want to do the procedural stuff and then turn it over to me and I'll read the zoning board of appeals, public meeting note that that read in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And do we have anybody who is not able to attend? And we have people that are alternates that are taking their place?
Anna, do you want to go through that?
I believe Ann Darling is the only member that's not going to be here today.
Okay.
And Jason Mariaski is the only alternate I got a reply from.
And who?
Oh, Jason Mariaski.
Okay.
So Kathy, what we're gonna do is two fold one. What we're gonna, so if you if you do the read in for the public hearings and the web based call procedures, Anna, if I'm gonna do a roll call and then I will read in the hearing reading and then turn it right back over to you. And then Jim, I have your material. It's great that you have that. If you need it, I can share the screen and share all of the that plus the historic documents that you forwarded for presentation. So it's up to you how you want to share that.
This is the only one I have large enough, so I probably will be asking you to share the Ridgewood Park original subdivision.
Okay.
As well as a couple of the Gurwick plans and probably a couple of the photographs.
Yep, so I've got all that in one PDF, so I can just pop it up and we can go back and forth between them.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna get through it.
It'll be good. We've done a bunch of these so far. They've been fine.
Okay.
Yes, it is. It's very true. So I put myself on mute just because there's like six of us in the room and so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm just gonna go ahead and admit them.
I won't take offense.
I'm gonna read in the public hearing. This is a web based call and all are operating under the following procedures. This session is being audio recorded. Please be advised that today we are also recording the video of the proceedings. We will not use the chat feature during this meeting. To ensure good sound quality, the default rule is for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute. Commissioners and staff will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting. Public comments will be only accepted during the public hearing portion of the meeting. The chair will announce when the hearing is open and will ask for all public comment. Public comments will not be accepted after the hearing is closed. If a member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they will be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of staff or the chair. When the hearing opens, you may give your comments in the following manner. Email your comments to permits@waterfordct.org at any point during the public hearing and before the public hearing closes. Please include your name and your address. Before the public hearing closes, we will ask for any new comments from people who don't have access to email or who are only available to join by phone. State your name and address for the record. If multiple people wish to speak, the meeting moderator will call on you individually. And please listen for instructions. We appreciate your attendance at this meeting. Should you have any questions about the process, you may call our staff at 860-444-5813 after the meeting has ended.
All right, thank you. So, good afternoon. The zoning board of appeals is a public meeting of the town of Waterford and will be in session the seventh day of May 2020 at 3 o'clock PM. All decisions of the board are final. In accordance with the Connecticut general statutes 8-8B, any person aggrieved by any decision of the board may take an appeal to the Superior Court. The appeal shall be commenced in accordance with section 8-8E and F within 15 days from the date the notice of decision was published as required by general statutes. Our staff member Anna Scanlon will now read roll and alternates will be appointed as as necessary.
Ann Darling. Absent. Joshua Friedman.
Here.
Michelle Crips. Absent. Warren McKenzie.
Present.
Kathy Newlin.
Here.
Jason Mariaski.
Here.
Danielle McCarty.
She's on mute, but she's here.
Okay.
Here.
Thank you. Darcey Van Ness. I take that as an absent. And those, that's everybody on the floor.
Quiet. So we have three members, regular members present, Kathy, and we also have two alternates.
Yes. Okay, so can I have a motion on the floor from our members to approve the minutes from our November 7th meeting?
We need, we do need to officially seek the alternates for the regular members before we get started with that.
I thought that you just took care of that, so.
Sorry.
So Jason Mariaski is sitting in for Ann Darling and Danielle McCarty sitting in for Michelle Crips.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, do I have a motion on the floor to approve the previous minutes? Danielle, you're on mute, but I can see that you're talking to us.
I just said I'd motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And any opposed? Some move. So, public hearing application Z-20-1, appeal of Robert Nauda owner and James Bernardo LS applicant at Ten Shore. Is that supposed, it says road, but I believe that's supposed to be drive.
That should be drive.
Thank you. The VR-75 zone variances are requested from the zoning regulations, section 6A.6. Lot area setback and building regulations. Front yard setback variance of 10 feet, building coverage variance of 3%. Variance is needed to construct single family dwelling on existing foundation. A coastal site review plan is required in accordance with the Coastal Management Act. Public hearing must be closed by Wednesday, June 10th, 2020. So the exhibit list is online and available. And it's in the record. Jim Bernardo, do you want to start?
Sure, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, audio, audio is okay, okay. Thank you. My name is Jim Bernardo. I'm a land surveyor. My address is 102A Spithead Road here in Waterford. And I'm representing Robert Nauda, who owns the property. And also, I'm kind of interesting, Dean and Kathleen Collins, who are very first time I'm meeting my clients for this job, is is here, so.
Sorry, Jim, Jim, I forgot something and I hate to interrupt you.
Nope, nope, it's okay.
Um, I need to go on record just noting that I know the applicant and I also know the property owner. And the property owner also has their property listed with RE/MAX Legends, who I work for. With Marilyn Lusher, but I in no way have any dealings with the property or do I have any financial gains associated with this decision? So I just wanted to go on record and note that upfront. I forgot to do that earlier.
Okay. So the property, as you said, is Ten Shore Drive-In, so the Ridgewood Park development. Abby, if you could put up the exhibit for Ridgewood Park from the original layout, I'm not sure if you could do that or not. Oh, there it is, okay. So this is Ridgewood Park. This was a development that was created back in 1921. Off the bottom of the screen down towards the bottom is actually the couple of lots. If you could scroll down for me, Abby. There we go. The property we're talking about is that those lots that are outlined there adjacent to Al Life Cove. As I said, this was Ridgewood Park, which was created in 1921. And as you know, your first zoning regulations of the town weren't adopted until 1954. So this development was created prior to any zoning regulations in the town. I'm trying to think of where I want you to go with the next one. Okay, we'll just leave that up for now. So the property is a vacant residential lot, one of the last few parcels left in the Ridgewood Park. And it's owned VR 7.5. And to the north and west across Shore Drive are single family residential structures. To the south is a town of Waterford recreational land and the sewage pump station. And then to the east is Al Life Cove with the city of New London and then Ocean Beach is located across the Cove, the city. Across the north part of the property, there's a drainage basement that was conveyed to the town in 1994 for the road drainage. Okay. So, as Kathy had mentioned, this is also in a coastal area management zone or a CAM zone. CAM application review is part of this commission's action today. It's also located in the flood hazard zones AE. Both elevations 11, which is immediately adjacent to Al Life Cove, and then AE elevation 10, which is the more inland portion of the property. Abby, if you could pull up the Gurwick CAM 2004. Okay, this is a landscaping plan that was developed by Gurwick Marine in 2004 for the CAM application at the time. Actually, I'm looking for the other one, Abby, that one. There you go. This was certified as an A2 survey and it was a coastal site plan application. The house that we're proposing is the same exact location and size that was on that particular application. What I'd like to call to your attention on this particular map is that red line that I've highlighted there. In the course of doing their survey, Gurwick Marine determined that that was the front street property line. And that's going to play to importance with this application because as I was hired by the buyers to perform an update on that survey and to verify it, I determined that the front street line was was incorrect on that survey. So what I'd like you to, Abby, pull up if you would, is the the photos. So approximately 10 years ago, a foundation was, oh, did you, we good? We okay, okay. So about 10 years ago, a foundation was constructed on the property for the new house. The property was stabilized, but the house was never built. The lot is pretty much not been touched since since that point. So as you can see, the the top photograph there, that's standing on the town's park property, looking towards the north and you can kind of see the the concrete column sticking up out of the ground. Abby, can you scroll to the, I think it's probably the last photograph. Okay, and that's the view from the street. Those are the concrete columns or the foundation that was constructed in in 2004 for the house. The intent is to do, use the under portion of the property for for parking. And as I said, it's in a flood zone, so the building is elevated above the flood zone. So Abby, if you could pull up one more time that Gurwick planting plan, because it shows the site a little closer. Okay, so again, the red line is the street line as determined by Gurwick Marina back in 2004. And the front building setback was set at 15 feet. And the concrete piers were constructed in accordance with that setback. I had determined in the course of doing the survey that that front street line was incorrect on this survey. And it's actually 10 feet closer to the foundation or 10 feet further away from the road. Therefore, it puts those existing foundation columns in violation of the current front yard setback requirement of 15 feet. And it makes them only five foot. So again, 15 foot is required by your VR 7.5 regulations. There is a provision in section 6A.6 of your regulations that allows you to use the front yard setback. The average of the front yard setbacks on either side or of adjacent or adjacent sides. Unfortunately, the town of Waterford owns the property to the south and there is no building other than the sewage pump station. So we could not use that for a from average front yard setback. So the front yard setback in accordance with your regulations has to be held at 15 feet. Did I miss anything? So the variance, variances that we're requesting are two of them. One is for a variance of 10 feet to allow for a front yard setback of five feet, so that would be a variance of section 6A.6. And the second would be a variance of 3% for coverage to allow for a coverage of 23%. Again, because the front street line was incorrectly established by Gurwick Marine on the previous application. When we pushed the line to where it should be, it results in a shortage of lot area. Therefore, we have, the percentage of coverage gets bumped up and we exceed the coverage requirements. The hardships that I'd like the commission to consider for this, again, the lot existed prior to the current regulations. It was constructed, these lots were created in 1921, prior to the current regulations or prior to any regulations. Therefore, it creates a hardship on the property to strictly enforce those current zoning requirements. And also that the survey area, which was created by the Gurwick Marine survey, was not of the property owner's doing. The existing foundation has been constructed and is in place. And the house that we're proposing is going to fit on the same foundation and is the same size and location that was previously approved but was not constructed. So that's the first part of our application. And Abby, I'm not sure, do you want to handle the the variance request and then we'll move on to the CAM or do you want me to present the whole thing?
Um, that's.
I should say Kathy. To the chair.
So why don't, why don't you present the whole thing at the end this time?
Well, excuse me.
I'll quickly.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, this is Josh.
I can hear you, Josh, yeah.
Typically, I mean, we went through the hearing time where they didn't present CAM first. And the CAM is, has to be approved before you do the variance, doesn't it? No, I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure.
No, not necessarily.
You don't follow with the variance, but we're doing it all in one meeting, but doesn't CAM get approved before you approve any variances or are you coastal area management, is that what it is?
I, I think the the presentation can come simultaneously, but there will need to be two separate votes. And if the CAM vote comes first, that would make some sense and then it could come after.
Oh, okay. Okay, so again, this, so I guess I should have done this as the first part, but the second part of this obviously is the the CAM review or the coastal area management. This commission is charged with responsibility under section 25.4 of the zoning regulations to review this in accordance with the Coastal Area Management Act. The coastal resources on or adjacent to this property include coastal waters, coastal hazard areas, both elevations AE 10 and AE 11. Estuarine embankments and embankments, I'm sorry, and tidal wetlands. Again, as I explained before, we have a flood hazard zones AE, which is elevation 11 immediately to Al Life, adjacent to Al Life Cove with elevation 10, which is the more inland property, portion of the property. The remaining resources are along, are along the edges of Al Life Cove. A detailed CAM application was prepared for the site and is part of the exhibit package. I'm not going to go through that. It's been available, I think, online. I don't think we need to go through every detail on that, hopefully. As I previously mentioned, it was a CAM application by Gurwick Marine with a detailed planting plan from 2004 to 2007. And there was also some shorefront stabilization that was included in that. We basically have copied that same plan with with very little exception. Actually, we've added some plantings for ease of review and approval by the staff. There's over 100 new plantings planned along the shorefront to help stabilize that. There was no work proposed along the immediate shorefront. That was at the request of the DEP. There's some stone riprap and actually, I don't know, can you guys see me? Because I don't see myself. Can you see me?
Yes.
Okay, so there's some riprap along the shorefront here. There's no activity taking place anywhere along what they refer to as the CJL or the coastal jurisdiction line. The activity is taken upwind of that. The original plan had wood chips in here to help stabilize it. There was a request from the DEP and their CAM review to eliminate those because during storm events, those wood chips would just get washed away. That made, that made sense, so we did remove that. And so we have numerous plantings all through here. We have a planting schedule, again, most of the same plants and vegetation that was previously approved in the previous CAM application. The site is currently, I'll call it stabilized with overgrowth. Obviously, all that's going to have to be cut down and cleaned up when the new house is constructed. The limits of clearing along the shorefront, we have both a staked hay bale and a silt fence along the shorefront. And we provided silt fence along both the north and the south property lines to avoid any kind of erosion there. Once the construction is complete, lawn areas are going to be stabilized, seeded and mulched. Part of the previous permit was that no significant changes in site topography. So there's notations on here that we're not, we can't raise the grade any more than six inches. And obviously, the final plantings will put in once the site is stabilized. Again, this is in flood elevation 10. The top of the piers are at elevation 14, so the the first living space will be at elevation 16. This will allow, it's about elevation 0.5 underneath the building. So this will allow for parking underneath the building with the living space above it significantly higher than the flood elevation. So there's, there should not be any issues with with flooding. However, again, since elevation five around the property and FEMA claims it's going to flood to elevation 10, there will be no dry access to the site during a storm event. All the, all the utilities will be elevated above the BFE. There is a proposal for a buried propane tank here. We have provisions in there for that to be strapped down, so it doesn't become buoyant. And at the request of the of the buyers, they were very adamant about this, for roof runoff, we're directing all of our roof leaders down to rain barrels. And they want to try to recycle as much rainwater as they can. So the commission for their CAM review needs to find that the, and I'm just going to rate for my notes. The property is owned for residential use and is consistent with uses allowed with town of Waterford zoning regulations. Water dependent uses are limited in the VR 7.5 zone. The potential impact of coastal resources, both the coastal waters, coastal flood hazard areas, estuarine embankments and tidal wetlands have been mitigated to the greatest extent possible. And that is my presentation. If anybody has any questions or comments, I can go through them.
Okay. So does staff have any comments at this point in time?
Sure. For the record, Mark by Tevius Town Planner, I had prepared a memorandum for the for the board to consider. Like you to note that you're actually going to be making two actions on this application. One will be for the variances requested and and another action for the coastal site plan approval. We could go, if you would like to go through my findings and decisions for the coastal site plan. Act on that first.
Sure.
And then we'll review the memorandum for the variances request. As as Jim, Jim Bernardo had stated, the the impacts to the coastal resources are going to be minimal. It's been determined based upon the fact that the foundation's already in place. And that the foundation actually are piers that are constructed. So any sort of site grading or anything like that has been essentially eliminated. Because all that work has already been done based on a previous CAM approval. The reason why this is back in front of the board or at least in front of the town, because the previous CAM approval had expired. CAM approvals are good for five years. The approval, initial approval was done in 2004. So anyone that had purchased a property that wanted to build on here would have to reapply. And that's what, that's what you have in front of you. The reason why the zoning board of appeals is actually reviewing this CAM is because the, the way the statutes read is that if there is a parcel that's located in the CAM boundary, which this is, and it needs to to require variances from the zoning board of appeals, or at least be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals for variances. And there is no other site plan approvals required, then the zoning board of appeals is also tasked with reviewing the CAM report and approving and approving the CAM as well. So that is why it's in front of the CBA. Quite honestly, you guys haven't really done any CAM approvals for a few years. I'm only, I only recall one that actually had to go for the zoning board of appeal. These are usually handled by the planning and zoning commission as a site plan. But those are on sites that don't require variances. What you have in front of you is a series of written findings of which there is a findings of consistency with the Coastal Area Management Act. We could go over any of those if anybody has any questions.
So, Mark, do we have to have the comments? And questions about either the CAM or the variance at this time? Or just start with just the CAM comments and then move on to variance questions for the public is what I'm I'm speaking of?
Sure, right. What I would do is, is, you know, if there are any questions concerning the CAM, we could certainly answer those. And then from there, we would, we would act on the CAM application. And then work on the variances and any questions on those also open that up to.
Well, our, our public hearing is open at this time, so we wouldn't be closing the public hearing, then reopening it and then closing it would be kind of.
This is Abby. I think the the process would be to open for comment on any, but whoever is making a comment from the public should clarify whether the comment is about the CAM or about the variance. So we have on record what what the comment was for and who delivered.
Okay. And no other staff comments at this time?
Question. Joshua Friedman, I have a question.
Go ahead, Josh.
Have the, the property was approved for CAM previously, had, since then, has any of the CAM regulations changed? That would affect, have any of the CAM regulations changed since this approval was done previously?
Have, no, no, they have not.
Okay. Thank you.
So are there any other, I guess, questions on the, as far as the board members go for applicant Jim Bernardo?
Warren McKenzie, just super quick, so DEP has seen this coastal area management report and signed off on it already.
DEP has seen the application and the in the the CAM application. DEP has seen the application and the, in the CAM application that the applicant has submitted. CAM, CAM is under the jurisdiction of the municipality to approve.
Okay. The DEP has seen it and there was nothing they wanted to add?
They have.
It was okay by that? Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board for Jim Bernardo?
Nope.
Okay. So I will go on to ask, is there anybody in the public who would like to make a statement? If you, please state your name and your address. Anybody that wants to make a statement during the public hearing? Do I have somebody that wants to make a statement? Okay. Hearing none.
Before, before we do that, this is Abby. We're just checking the email address really quickly to make sure that no public comment has been emailed in.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll have that back in just one second.
Okay.
I would like to make a statement.
Sure.
Hi, I'm sorry.
Your name and your address?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was on mute and I didn't realize how to work it. Sorry. My name is Lisa Reveruzzi. I live at 14 Shore Drive. And I would like to make a statement opposing the variances requested. It's my understanding that this is a self-created hardship. The lot was, from what I'm hearing here, when the lot was originally purchased, there should have been some indication to the purchaser that it may be non-conforming. Back in 2004, there were approvals given based on information that he provided. And that information now is found to be not valid. The size of the house that he's asking to build there does not fit with the character of the neighborhood. And now we're asking to place a large home that's about 50% larger than any other home on this block on even smaller lot now. This isn't a hardship. He can reconfigure the home. It was never built. These, this pre-existing foundation or pillars that can be reconfigured to build a home that would fit appropriately in the size of the lot without any variances. I also had some questions regarding the CAM because of the significant amount of flooding that occurs over here and that has been occurring since the original CAM was approved, I assume. And I don't know much about the CAM or what it means, but I do know that there is significant flooding here. And looking at the site plan, I'm not quite sure how some daisies and other plantings are going to present the flooding. Where the, where the plantings go on to the town easement, that area floods regularly. Whenever there is a storm that moves through the cove, the cove needs to be dredged. It's flood. It's flood. I've been flooded out of this house twice. And I live next door. So I have serious concerns. I have concerns about what happens when you move all of the vegetation that is on that lot currently, that's been growing there for the past 16 years. I'm not sure if that doesn't upset the ecosystem over there and make it prone to flooding. So those are the concerns I have environmentally. But as I said, it's, it's a lot that a house can be built on. It just doesn't need to be a two, over 2,000 square foot home. So I don't think that this is, there is a hardship here that is going to be resolved, that needs to be resolved by a variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak regarding this application?
Right now, we're only speaking regards to CAM. Is that correct?
No, we're speaking on both.
We haven't gotten all the information on the variance part that we've.
Hello?
Has everything been done?
Yeah, Jim made his presentation on the variance first and then the CAM part second. And now we have public hearing open.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was just going to note, I noticed on the screen that there's a phone with a mute on. I know that my neighbor from across the street at 10 Shore Drive was trying to call in to voice her objection to the variance as well. It'd also be the other neighbor across the street who is objecting to the variance as well. Donna Willis.
Okay.
So is there anybody in the public that would like to speak regarding this application?
Hello? Hi.
Yes. Can you please state your name and your address?
Hi, this is Jill. Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
It's Jill Johnson and I live at 23, sure. And I, I'm sorry, I forgot about the meeting, so I just joined. So I'm not sure what's going on and I don't, I don't know if it's here to ask you what the situation is at this point.
At, at this point, we have had a presentation regarding the application and the public hearing is still open. And so we're looking for comments from the public at this point in time regarding this application. So if you would like to make, make a statement, then you can do so at this time.
Okay, well, I know that what is in question is the variance. I, I'm not sure, you know, what the particulars are about that. I do know that we definitely need to do something with that property. It's just such an eyesore. I've been here for four years and, you know, I was excited to hear that someone had bought it. And hopefully, you know, they'll be able to build something on it that's in agreement with the neighbors. But I'm in favor of them doing something, but I don't know what transpired before I got on, so. You know, in fairness, I need to say that. I just don't know what the other neighbors are feeling about this.
Can I respond to that since she wasn't on? Can I restate my comments?
Well, your comments are for the board.
Okay.
And that's, that's who is, is voting on this. She's not voting on it. The board is.
But perhaps you'd like to be aware that they're getting a variance to build a 2,300 square foot lot in a lot that's not currently sized for that size house. And so some of the objection in the neighborhood is that the house is too big for the lot. And to grant a variance to put a big house into a small lot is objection, is, is, is not favored by the neighbors in this area of the home.
Are they, are the potential buyers willing to downsize?
So what we have here is we have an application in front of us to vote on at this point in time. And that's what we're here to do.
Kathy, I'd like to comment.
So please state your name and your address.
My name is Marilyn Lusher. I live at 6 Williamsburg Drive in the town and I am the real estate agent who has that property listed that's been on the market for a very long time. That property, the board should know that it was, and I'm sure you do, that plan was approved back in, I think, Jim, 2004. The only reason we are here is because Gurwick Marine made an error in outlining the front, what, what the town actually owns. The, the size of the house, it's a one-story home built on stilts. So it's not an overbearing two-story home, which there are houses on the street that are already two-story homes, which I think, I believe the neighbor next door has a single-story home. And I believe the neighbor next door actually had appealed to the zoning board of appeals, which I sit on because of the eyesore that was next door. So building a home on the lot would be a benefit, not only to the neighborhood, but to the neighbor immediately next door.
I disagree.
Well. Does, can I speak?
Sure.
There was two things. Does anybody know what the average-sized home is in that neighborhood?
Well, that's what I'm looking up right now.
The other question that, that the, I'm sorry, Jim, did you have any answer for that?
No, go ahead, Josh. The only comment I was going to make was the, the neighbor who's concerned about the 20, the 2,000 square foot house, a 2,106 foot square, square foot house could be built on this property in accordance with the current regulations and we would not need a variance for that. But in order to get this to fit on the existing concrete piers without having it shrunk on those piers, we were requesting the variances and then we have the roof lines with the soffits and things like that. So the concern about having the 2,300 square foot house, we could go to a 2,100 square foot house by the regulations. So we're not completely oversized for what is allowed in this lot.
So you just.
You're adding three, you're adding 3% to what the regulation would allow. Is that right?
Correct. That's right. Only, only 3%. And again, it's the same house that was proposed and should have been built 15 years ago, 16 years ago on the property.
So your testimony is that you can build a smaller house on that plot?
No, the town, I'm saying the town allows us to go up to 2,100.
Just for a procedural note, please, any, any conversation, the, the public hearing is not a back-and-forth conversation and
No, I'm sorry.
Public comments can certainly be offered through the chair in order for, for testimony to be recorded for the record for the board to consider. So just, just in terms of procedure, if we can keep it to not a back-and-forth, that would be great.
I apologize.
Kathy, I'd like to comment.
Okay, please state your name and address again.
It's Marilyn Lusher, 6 Williamsburg Drive. Looking into the multiple listing system, there are properties on that street that are in 2,548 square feet, 2,281, there's another one at 2,281 square feet. Certainly, there are, there's a 2,196 and of course, there are the smallest home down there at 1,124 square feet. So certainly, this number that's requested is within the range of the houses that are currently there. I can't remember. Jill, what's your house number?
I'm 23.
Thank you. And your house, your home, which is across the street, is 2,548 square feet?
That's what it's, yeah, that's apparently, apparently that's when I bought it, that's what was stated.
And I'm the person who sold it to you, so I pulled that up.
Hi, Marilyn.
Remember, we do want to keep the comments focused on this application and not, not a back-and-forth conversation, please.
Okay.
Marilyn, this is Joshua, this is Joshua Freeman. The houses that are over 2,100 square feet, are they within the 20% coverage of the lot? Or are they, are they non-conforming as well?
I don't, I don't know if, I don't have that information, but I do know, I mean, if the closest one that is 20, over 2,000 square feet is Jill's home, this is Johnson's home, which is across the street and over one or over two.
Over four.
Over four? Okay, well, it's, it's within view. I know that. So, so that's the, the closest one. There is, she's number 23. Number 27 is 2,196 square feet. I don't know the coverage. You'd have to check with the town on that. I believe the one at number 27 is the one on the corner, which is a three-story building with an addition off the back. It sits on the corner lot. I don't know what the coverage is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is there any way from the town to find out that or? What's that?
I have not, I have not researched that at all. This is, I just looked at the variances that were being requested.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Bobby, anything you want me to add?
Okay. Is there any other public comments this time?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Please state your name and your address.
Gwen Horstley, 11 Shore Drive.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm also very concerned with the variance. I don't think I understand enough about the CAM information. But I too would like to see a somewhat smaller house. My house is very small. And to have that house any closer to the road seems, you know, that's not my problem, what happened with the former Gurwick Associates or whoever did this, surveyed the property.
Okay.
Kathy, can I address that moment's comments? Okay. I just want to make sure she understands that the house is going on the existing concrete foundation. So it's, it's not going to appear any closer to the road. It's going to stay where those concrete columns are. It's just the front property line is going to be closer, a line that, you know, it's not defined, it's not visual out there. But the building is not going to be within five feet of the road. It's going to be within five feet of the front property line and it's going to be on the structure that's currently there. Just want to make sure she understands that, the caller.
Thank you, Jim.
So I got a question. The, so the concrete piers that were there were, were at the time built as under, it was approved, those, they hadn't been approved.
Yes.
So the foundation for this house has already been approved. Whether they're acre or not, that's not the question. They were, they were approved and they were built. So it's a pre-existing condition at this point.
Yeah, correct. The foundation piers were put in, in accordance with the approval that was granted in 2004.
Right. And if there's any mistake, it's really the mistake of either the town or, or the, or the DEP for not verifying the survey?
No, the town does not verify surveys. That's what the license on the surveyor does. So they are, you know, when, when the surveyor signs off on a survey, he's putting his name on it and his, his signature on it and that's, that's the valid survey that the town goes by.
Right. So at this point, it's already, the piers are already there. They haven't, if they have to be removed, then you'd be on coastal area management again. You're disturbing the wetlands and all that other stuff at this point.
That is, that is correct.
Which is, which is more disturbing. Okay, thank you.
Kathy, can I add something as well? May I?
Yes.
Okay. There's also a statute to the chair, to Josh. There's a statute that says, if there's a, and I'm trying to try to paraphrase this. If a structure exists for a period of three years and it's in non-compliance with the regulations, the town can't take an enforcement action on it. It's deemed a, it's deemed a non-conforming structure. But it's kind of gray because we have a structure, we have a foundation, but there's no house on it. So in order to kind of tread that water a little bit, I met with town staff and they said, you know, rather than going that way, let's go, let's go for the variance process as opposed to arguing, well, you know, do we meet that statute or don't we meet that statute? And so that's why we're applying for the variance, to use the current foundation and put a house on the structure that's already there. Did I, did I confuse things more or did I, did I clarify things more?
No, I, I thank you, Jim. All right, is there any?
As a point of order, we're not allowed to comment on the comments that they make?
If you can please state your name and address again and then, yes, you can comment.
My name is Lisa Reveruzzi. I live at 14 Shore Drive.
Okay. Go ahead.
I don't, I disagree that this is a pre-existing condition in the sense of where you grant variances. There's been nothing built on this property for 14 years. There's been nothing built on this property for 14 years. And I'm sorry that there was an error done with the surveying, but I think that sets it back to square one, because now we have the true size of the lot. I think that the home should fit the existing square footage without any type of variance at this time. That's my comment, thank you for allowing me to speak today, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any final comments from the public? Are there any final comments from the public? Are there any final comments from the public? Hearing none? The public hearing is now closed.
Can I ask?
Yes, Josh.
Um, Jim?
Yes.
The question was asked, can you build a smaller house on the same foundation? I mean, you could...
Go ahead.
The foundation has its footprint. Can you build a smaller house on the same footprint of the foundation, like bring the walls in so, so much to make it fit the, fit the square footage regulation?
Use the same foundation that you have? Uh, I'm not a structural engineer, but I, I would think that they could hold it in on the existing foundation. And so the, the foundations would be protruding out from underneath the structure. But if the variance isn't granted for the front yard setback, again, they'll be tearing out those front, there's a front row, there's, there's one, two, three, four, there's four columns here in the front, these would all have to come out, and it would push, you know, do some sort of restructuring and excavation back beyond the current, or the correct building line to reconfigure the building. So the, the front setback was not granted, variance was not granted, it would at least require the removal of, of these four columns that have already been constructed, and those were all inspected. It was quite a process actually to dig those, because the groundwater problems, they had the watering issues. I spoke with Ed Whitey, who was a structural engineer on that just this morning. It was quite a process to put that foundation in, and there's, there's quite an extensive report in the file on that installation, so, um, it would result in quite a, quite an impact, quite a more impact, I, I feel, on the coastal resources if you had to excavate that out.
Right, now, um, I mean, you've got, on the back of the house, decks or something, or what?
Yes, there are decks on the back, though.
Could you?
Could I be wrong, Mark, I don't think the decks count as coverage, but the roof did, snap?
Abby, can you please mute the cell phone, there's wind that's just taking over on that cell phone, thank you.
So, so part, part of what we do is try to minimize variances, I guess, or, you know, so if we could reduce back to what the cover, to 20%, you pull the walls in on the backside of the house, or something, or, I'm not sure?
Yeah, just to clarify that, the coverage, uh, the, the decks are considered part of the building, and they have to meet the setback, but they're not included in coverage. The coverage calculation is the exterior walls with the roof overhangs. So that's how the, uh, the coverage is calculated, that's, that's 2,320 square feet, and with a parcel area of 10,400, there's a coverage of 23%. Yeah, you know, I, I would anticipate that that probably could be done.
So you're basically pulling the back walls and the side walls over a little bit to, to get, you know, get under 20, or at 20% rather than 23?
Which again, would be 2,100 square feet as opposed to 2,300 square feet. If the commission decides that we have not proved the hardship variance for coverage, you know, that, that's something that the architect will have to take a look at.
Okay. Thank you, I mean, it's one solution. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments? Are there any other comments at this time? Are there any other comments at this time? Do we have any emails that?
We do not.
Okay, so at this time, I am going to close the public hearing. And now we'll move into application review. And so with the application review, the board needs to vote on the coastal management, um, piece first, and then we can address the variance. Does anybody on the board have any comments or questions regarding the coastal management piece?
I'll make a motion if nobody has any comments.
Go ahead, Josh.
I make a motion to approve the CAM, uh, application based on that it's already been pre-approved before, and there's no changes to the regulations.
Warren McKenzie would second.
Thank you. And any further discussion? Okay, and I will take a vote, and I will ask you each to state your name and your vote. I'll start with Josh.
I vote to approve the CAM applicant.
Okay, Warren?
Warren McKenzie would like to vote to approve.
Okay, Jason?
I also vote to approve.
And Danielle? Uh, you're on mute, you're on mute. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I vote to approve the application.
And myself, I also vote to approve the CAM application. So now that CAM report vote has taken place, and we will move on to the variance portion. And so, does the board have any comments?
Um, I actually do have a comment on this. Now, so the, the center at this issue is that it was surveyed improperly, and it was stamped as being correct, when in fact, they blew the survey by only almost 10 feet.
So that is, that is something that took place, yes. But it is also, the lot was existing prior to the zoning regulations. The lot went into existence in the 1920s, and the zoning regs didn't go into effect until the 1950s. So this was a pre-existing lot to begin with, that's where their hardship lies.
Is, are there houses, are there houses on, in the, in the development that are that close to the road, the roadlines? You know?
I don't know for sure, but I have looked at a lot of them down in that area, and there's a lot that have a lot of coverage, small lots, and close to the road. I've walked that neighborhood quite a bit, and, um, that would be my observation, but that's just my observation.
Typical of these, these developments. I've been for 12 years or more, and I think it's typical for these types of developments, small lots with houses that are very close to their lot line. So most of that probably non-conforming zone, that would be my guess, but I don't know for sure.
I would agree with that statement.
So...
Any other comments from the board or motions?
Um, I'm just wondering what, about reducing that size down to 2,100 square feet on this rent? So we don't, you know, you know, just, we've approved, we've approved the... Any comments on that, or?
I've looked at some of the square footage in that neighborhood, and there's some at 25 and 26 and 22, and some of those are are two, um, story homes.
Uh, I'm wondering, um, do we want to try to get definitive information on the non-conformity of the neighborhood? Or in terms of some other examples, can we do that? You know, um, prove without prejudice, so that they can come back, if they can prove that, you know, conformity in the neighborhood is similar, or non-conformity is similar to the neighborhood, so it's in keeping with the neighborhood? Because we're only going on information, you know, you're, you know, that people think, no. Oh, there.
Well, I think, I think that, that, you know, you know, one of the things to, to take a look at here is, is the fact that what we've got is they, you know, so built the residential district to begin with. You know, if you want numbers in terms of percentage of lots in which they are, you know, in which, which the houses are non-conforming for coverage, you know, we could, we could certainly do that. I don't necessarily know about whether to move tonight or today without prejudice, and then have them come back, or whether to extend and continue the hearing, but...
The, I, I believe the public hearing has been closed, so the board only has the ability to deliberate on the actual information that's in the record right now. So it would be a matter of whether or not the several hundred square feet is substantial enough that the board wants to consider denial without prejudice and have folks come back, or if it's that, that particular area is small enough that, and, and fits with the current information that you have to be able to make a decision based on the information before you, it's, it's a choice of the board.
Yeah, because it's, you know, we can, we can, we can say it's within keeping the neighborhood, there are other houses of that size. So, yeah, okay, thank you.
So from the information that I'm looking at, I see, um...
Kathy?
I'm like, yeah?
That information, you have to be careful, make sure that's already in the record.
Oh, okay.
That you're looking at.
Um, this is Warren McKenzie, can I just add that, that 3% really isn't a lot? It really, it's 1,200 feet over the area of a house. I mean, you wouldn't be able to tell that from the road unless, you know, you had some kind of measuring equipment. I mean, there would, it wouldn't, it wouldn't look any different than the other houses at the 20%, because it's, it's just, it's a 3% difference. I mean, they're not going for, you know, 10 feet over a height requirement or something.
Agreed.
Well, it's, it's, it's in the nine, it's in the non-conforming category, that's, that's all. We try, we try not to, um, we try to limit the, the non-conformities when they, when they change, when they change. Houses are non-conforming, so...
Of course, but can I just also add that a lot of these zoning regulations were set up to keep the, um, the village look, or the look of the homes in the area as some kind of standard? Um, and that's why the, the 20%, um, you know, is there, is to keep it, so, you know, one house isn't spilling over the other, or they all kind of fit a, an image of the neighborhood.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay.
So does anybody on the board want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, I guess. I would make a motion to approve this application.
Like to, Josh, if I could, if I could just, just interject here for a minute. There was a memorandum that I had established, and, um, along with that, there was a list of findings and conditions associated with this, with this application.
Right.
The, um, the condition is that the, since this, they're seeking a lot coverage variance, that if, if, if the commission so decides to approve, or the board so decides to approve, that there not be any, um, they wouldn't be able to, to put up any accessory structures, sheds, or cover any portion of the open deck system without having to come back to the zoning board of appeals to request additional variances.
Right.
Just like that added as a condition.
Okay.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Warren McKenzie will second the motion.
So we're including what he just said about the conditions of it? That this is, if, if, we're going to allow a larger, you know, the 3% coverage, no more, no more variances can be had on coverage in the future, is that correct?
I would agree to that, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to approve and approve with the comments from the, um, town office staff and planner as to the conditions. And I have a second, so I'm going to call for the vote. Um, if I don't hear any other discussion. Okay, Josh Friedman?
I vote to approve.
Okay, Warren McKenzie?
I would vote to approve.
Okay, Jason Mariaski?
Vote to approve.
Okay, Danielle McCarty?
I vote to approve.
Thank you, and myself, I vote to approve as well. Okay, back to the agenda.
But thank you very much, this actually was not quite as bad as I thought it was going to be, so, this, this process, I should say.
Thank you. And I have lost my agenda. Okay, old business, do we have any old business on the table?
We do not.
No. Okay, any new business?
No new business.
Okay, do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Okay, do we have a July meet, a June meeting?
No, we don't. No applications have been coming.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
One other question. Did we ever, did we ever re-elect the chairman, the vice chairman, and all that? I can't remember, I don't know, I was away at the beginning of the year, so was that done already?
I, I don't believe, no, I don't believe that's happened.
No.
So we do? Shall we do that today, or do we put that on the agenda for next month?
I, I think we need to put it on the next agenda, since this is a special meeting, we're not adding things to the agenda, but we will put it on the next agenda of, of the board's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so then, would we have the June meeting just for that, or would we wait for something to come through us?
That's at the discretion of the board.
Well, we could do a virtual meeting, right, again?
Correct, yes. And it simply wouldn't be a public hearing, it would just be a, a meeting to, to do business of the board.
Yeah, meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Sure. Okay, and anything else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Thank you, second?
Warren McKenzie will second.
Thank you, so moved. Everybody have a wonderful day, stay safe.
Everyone stay safe, healthy, thank you.
Thank you.